I'd like to go ahead and begin, notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors to be held at 105 Port Isabel Road, Port Isabel, Texas, on April 8, 2020, at the hour of 5:30 PM, for consideration of the business of the agenda below. Actually, this meeting is being conducted on Zoom. This notice is posted at the office in the district on April 2, 2020, at 3 PM, in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551041, 551050, not less than 72 hours to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. All the board members are either present or on Zoom at this time. I guess, do we, item two, go ahead and stand for the pledge and invocation, is that so?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll stand for the... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Carlos? Okay, Eddie?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here, and we ask you for wisdom as we try to make the best decisions possible for our community and our organization. We ask you to guide us in all that we do. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Carlos. At this time, we'll move along to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Staff, board, who at this time like to share or discuss anything?
There's none.
Nothing today? Okay, we'll move along then to item five, general managers' report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, hopefully you can hear me loud and clear now. I just wanted to mention that Mr... Oh, number four, yes, correct, the minutes first. Do you want to go that route?
Excuse me, I did skip item four. Consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the regular meeting for March 25, 2020. Everyone had to interview those?
Yeah.
A motion made by Mr. Sarki for approval, sir, a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor? They are, none opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item five, Carlos, thank you.
Okay, yes, Juan Gonzalez at the wastewater treatment plant acquired his A water license, and just wanted to advise the board on it, that the A license is pretty high, a license for knowledge at the wastewater treatment, so just wanted to congratulate him today. And we also have a retired employee by name of Jared Martinez, that he's been with the district over 20 years, I believe like 24, 25 years altogether. He just retired and moved on, so congratulations on his retirement too. The next one, the next bullet that I have is this coming Friday, is Good Friday, so we have the day off, so we accommodated our work hours this week, so we can, everybody works equal amount of hours, so we'll be off. Normally, we are all on standby for any, anything that may happen. If y'all have any questions or comments during that day or the weekend, I'm always available on my cellphone too. Then, the next bullet I have there, the COVID-19, we updated our, it's an update, but we updated our essential infrastructure operations letter for our employees. The last one would expire today, so our next one goes all the way to April 30, 2020, and this letter will provide backup and support to the employees when they're driving back and forth to work. So, and then again, we've tried to comply with all the COVID-19, you know, like carefulness and trying to abide by all the rules of the county, and of course, our own rules, staying away six feet from each other, and once we go out of the building, we wear our mask, and sometimes we wear it here inside the building also when we're getting too close to each other. But, yes, we're all abiding, and hopefully that God will protect us throughout this time, all the district employees and of course, the board members too and their families. Then, and on the next bullet that I have here, the water and wastewater rate schedule, I attested, I believe there was a question on when the rate schedule kicks in, and we have the updated one for 2019, which was effective September 10, and then the rest are around the same time, actually, every year. So, 2020, it'll be around September the 10th, more or less, for this coming year. And as the board had mentioned, we'll try to suspend that one until further notice, but right now...
Wait, 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 you said, you what?
I guess that had, y'all had mentioned something like hold off on it. We're not going to bring this back until closer to September, see what the board thinks about it. There's nothing that we can do right now.
You just said we're going to September.
Well, actually, it's, I'm sorry about that, it's my mistake, it's just hold off on it until September. We get closer to September, we'll bring it back again and see what the board thinks on it. So, my bad. Okay, now, that's it on that, any other questions that y'all may have?
Yes, he's on the line now.
Noe?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so you're on, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is that it, Carlos?
That's it for me, any questions you may have, go ahead right now. But that's, that's all I have for right now, thank you.
Thank you, then we'll move along to item six. Okay, we move along to item six, discuss and approve for bond council and order postponing the bond election of Laguna Mottery Water District from May 3, 2020 to November 2020 pursuant to a proclamation by the Governor of the State of Texas dated March 18, 2020, and addressing other matters incidental thereon too. Any questions, comments?
Make a motion there for a second.
I can't, was that a motion made by Herb and a second by Alex?
Correct.
Okay, are all those in favor? Any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Alex and Herb, if you guys could turn your mic on, it's hard to hear.
Okay, I'll get it closer, can you hear me now?
Yes, better, thank you. Moving along to item number seven, consider and discuss for possible approval of temporarily suspending Section 1.4.8 Disconnection and Penalties on the Late Fees Corresponding to the Service Policy for Laguna Mottery Water District until further notice through the COVID-19.
Right, on this one here, that we had not presented it to the board yet, and we have held off on it temporarily until we see what the board decides on doing, but we have to bring it up to the board to suspend if the board decides to suspend it. It's for non-payment, not to cut off their water, and not include any penalties on them for late charges.
I believe I heard that the public, the PUC Chairman, just the day after we talked about this two weeks ago, did an order statewide suspending any disconnections.
That's more or less correct, yes.
The, the... That is correct.
We just, okay, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, that's correct, no late fees, you shouldn't shut them off, and that's correct.
Is there a window timeframe on this? Because it's kind of open-ended by adopting that, I mean, I'm not, just kind of clarification, you know?
At this time, I don't think there's a, there's a time limit on it. I could look at it, but it's open-ended for now.
Right, and then it does mention there until further notice, so hopefully it won't last too long, but it depends on the COVID virus itself.
What, who put out the information?
Public Utility Commission, the PC at the state level.
So, can we, can we make it so that we look at it when they reissue another statement in regards to then letting the fees, or just taking them off the table for that matter?
Yes, I'll be watching that, and when that happens, I'll bring it before the board immediately.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we need to take action on this, or we're going to prove it as is?
I'll move to approve.
Yes, for approval made by Mr. Avalos?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Jason?
Houston.
Houston, Mr. Houston, excuse me. Are all those in favor? They are, any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item number eight, Director of Operations Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the report for March is pretty, pretty much as it's been for the last few months, the March, again, in comparison this year to last year, has gone down, and the distribution side has gone down by 91 calls. The big difference, of course, was on the informational part, where it dropped down by 95, where it was 112 calls it took last year, compared to 17 this year. And the rest of them, there have been a few other changes that went up and down, but that was the biggest one on the distribution side. On the collection side... On the collection side, again, there was a change by about 18, and we had 15, it went up this time compared to last year, and most of it was in the preventive maintenance, where it went up by 15. They went out there and did more preventive maintenance that they hadn't passed, and it did drop down by four on the sewer backups, so that's your biggest two differences there. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the report?
Back to the water.
Yes, sir.
Have we had any problems with the new meters?
Problems as far as the only, no, we haven't. The only problems is that, well, that's on the customer side, thinking that, that they're getting overcharged, but that has pretty much excited, they've already pretty much accepted the fact that the new meters are more accurate, and...
So, we have a high degree of confidence in, as to their reliability?
Yes, sir, at this point, I would say yes. Any other questions?
On the disconnects, that's just the visitors, the winter Texan visitors, is that what that represents?
Some of them are, yes, on when visitors, others also where they, where they leave, and someone changed, moved from one house to another apartment or whatever.
Well, that would be under occupant change.
Occupant change, right.
Yeah, I'm referring to the disconnect. That is my question, last year we had 24, this time, but this year we have 40.
Right, there was an increase there, and again, that, that's a combination. I would say that's a combination where you have people that have left, especially, I guess, now with the, with the virus and everything being shut down at the island, I would imagine that that's probably where most of it was at.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. The second part of my report dealt with the...
I'm sorry, can I wrap real quick?
Yes, sir.
I just want to go back to Mr. Houston's question. He asked if we had a high degree of certainty that our new water meters are accurate, how would we have any idea if they are, if they are not accurate?
They go out there and test them, we've had quite a few requests to get the meters tested, and they go out there and test them. In the past, when they tested the meters, some of them were as low as 89%, and as high as 100% or 99%, but on an average, they were testing it around 93, 94%, and these new meters are testing pretty much at 99, 100%.
So, we have a special procedure that we do that tells us exactly how much water is flowing through it, and then compares that versus what the meter is saying?
Yes, sir, pretty much what they do is they go out there and they have a one gallon, you can say bucket, I guess, and what they do is disconnect the meter from the anguval, and they run the meter, or the water into this bucket, and as soon as it marks, they check it out again against what was in the bucket, and it'll tell you the accuracy on the, on the water that they pump out compared to what was in the bucket. They test it in, test it back out.
High volume, like a high-volume pressure, forcing it through the meter?
It's just a matter of opening the meter and putting the water into the bucket, and once that bucket fills up, it'll tell the, it'll show where the meter, if it's a one gallon or less than a gallon.
Is this like a technical way to do it, or is this just sort of like...
No, that's a technical way to do it, that's, that's the way it's pretty much done in the industry.
Just the reason I'm asking, and I'll give you the floor in a second, Carlos, is a 1%, if we're off by 1%, as you guys all know, when you, you know, made the motion to purchase these meters, 1% is a lot of money, so I'd hope we're, we're at 100%, considering we spent several million bucks on it.
Right, the meters that I've seen tested, they have been pretty 100%, Robert. The thing that they do is they use a meter tester, they connect the meter tester to the meter, so they run water through the meter tester, and at the same time, they're, the meters are also registering, so they can do one gallon, they do 10 gallons, like a low flow, high flow, depending on how much water they, they need to throw out, like 10, 15 gallons the most. And that's compared the meter tester to the meter itself, and that's, that's the way they do it with a meter tester. Now, there's another standard container that they have 10 gallons, and they also do that one, which is you fill it up, the 10-gallon mark, and then you look at the meter and then compare that, and you can do that like in percentages, like divide, and then find out the percent on it, but it is right at the 10-gallon mark, standard, nothing is going to deviate that, so once you hit the 10 mark, you see the meter also, and it'll tell you 10 gallons. So, we have a couple of ways of doing the meter testing.
Thanks, Carlos, the 10-gallon one seems a little bit more useful in terms of a test than like the one gallon, so I hope that's what we're using.
Correct, and the one gallon is used for low flows like small leaks, and then you do the high flow with the 10 gallons.
All right, thanks, gentlemen, appreciate the info.
Sorry, I wasn't clear on that. The second part of my report dealt with the new coronavirus contingency schedule that we have, and basically, the current situation with the operation department is a matter where departments are reaching out more to each other in order to perform their daily work. Although deferred maintenance is gradually increasing, every effort is being made to keep it to a minimum. For instance, the wastewater department takes care of the lift stations and sewer plant. The department has 14 positions, but only 12 on the contingency schedule and two vacant positions. Currently, there are 11 active employees and one lift station operator who has been out on sick leave, but is due to return next week. On the active positions, there are five employees on the first half of the week and six on the second part of the week. All operators have been instructed to wear their protective personal equipment that has been provided, such as masks, gloves, boots, caps, and hard hats. Currently, there is one operator per plant, but alternates needed to help each other out as one of the sewer plants. Needless to say, the sewer plant clarifiers are being attended. Therefore, no plant is being neglected to keep it operational. The lift stations are currently addressed by one employee and one assistant manager. The first maintenance is gradually growing, although not entirely due to the work schedule. Some of the, some of the work not being attended to on a regular basis includes painting, cleaning floats in the lift stations, fixing fences in the lift stations, and cleaning the sludge beds. Employees are asked to come in on an ask-needs basis and take care of immediate needs, such as sludge beds or changing out two-ton chlorine containers. And the water plant currently has 13 employees and are being scheduled at different times due to the shipwork that they have. With Water Plant One down, all employees are assisted with the operations at Water Plant Two. In an effort to start Water Plant One, the construction department worked with the water department in locating Water Plant One's 10-inch and 14-inch raw water lines to determine where the injection points for the chlorine dioxide should be installed in order to get Water Plant One operational. This will be reported in more details on Board Agenda Item Number Nine by Charles Ortiz with the Freezing Nichols Engineering Report on Water Plant One. On a side note, Water Plant One has gone through some repairs over its years, and maintenance provided on an ask-needs basis. Although Water Plant One was turned off in 2016 due to the new microfiltration system and Water Plant Two, we were trying to determine why a 5-inch deep plant would produce more than 2.9 MTDs. So, in July of 2017, the construction department drilled 481-inch holes on the trough in an attempt to increase capacity. The cost of this repair was over $2,400 for drills and bits, but the plant was never turned on again. A previous repair on Water Plant One was performed in 2014, which included chipping, grinding, and sanding to remove the rust on the clarifier. The rehab also included fabricating and replacing some mangle iron, as well as prime coating and painting. The cost of this rehab was $4,656. These types of repairs were performed by the water plant operators annually during the slow season. The maintenance department, the maintenance department has three employees where they split into work between themselves. They have been able to keep up with the vehicle repairs now that they have newer vehicles in place. However, the department keeps up with the regular vehicle maintenance in doing all changes, tire rotations, brake job on all vehicles, and performing regular maintenance on heavy equipment. The lab department has three employees and had asked for assistance from the wastewater department due to the employee who, who was, had been out. The employee is now back at work. The lab has been able to keep up with the testing and required by TCEQ. They have also been able to keep up with the shipwork. The collection department has six employees who has split the crew in accordance with the contingency schedule. However, they continue to perform the preventive maintenance on sewer lines, line spots, and sewer backups as they occur. They also work on sewer taps as requested. They did have to call an employee on standby to come in when one of the other employees that was on the emergency call-out schedule had to work nine hours one night. Because of a water line break at South Padre Island, and later that night, there was a sewer spill due to a clay sewer line that broke in Port Isabel. The distribution department has eight employees. They have four on and four off during the normal work week. They also have had to fix a couple of water line breaks during the day, and they've had to cut down on water tap installations on a day-to-day basis. The assistant distribution manager was in call on the water line break in South Padre Island and the sewer line break in Port Isabel. This caused an employee on standby to be called in. In similar case, standby employees were called in when the 16-inch water line under the bridge going to South Padre Island was repaired due to, due to it leaking. This line was previously repaired, but the clamp that was used did not hold up, so a larger clamp had to be used the second time. And the construction department, the construction department has seven employees, but only six are active on schedule. One employee is an Army Reserve and has been on active duty for almost two years, and since, since they were activated by the governor. They also have three on and three off. The construction department has managed to keep on track while working on one project at a time. They work in finding the, they worked in finding the new raw water line at Plant One, finished installing barbed wire at Andy Bowie Fence due to the TCEQ inspection to be performed tomorrow. They helped the distribution department with scaffolds that were needed to do the repair on the 16-inch water line under the bridge. They have been asked to do small jobs such as welding the gates at the warehouse. In conclusion, all the departments have managed to keep the water district operational in a very conscience of the work that needs to be completed. They are very aware of the need to take the extra precautionary steps to ensure that we keep the coronavirus out. They are practicing the social distancing and only have one person per unit. Departments in need of a vehicle are being loaned a vehicle by another department that can spare it. The drivers sanitize their vehicles daily, they have masks and gloves to protect them. Employees know that when they are, when they are off, they are on standby and are ready to come in if called. They are very appreciative that the board has taken the step to implement the contingency schedule and help them and their families stay safe from COVID-19. That concludes my report, thank you. Are there any questions?
I just got a comment, could you email me your information you just gave us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Robert, a nice report.
Thank you.
Well-stated, and of course, we always are doing the best we can for our staff, and we appreciate their, their work with the district. Let's move along to item number nine, District Engineers Report, Charles?
Right, yeah, I guess the first item here is the bond election delay and the impact on the schedule of capital projects. As you're aware, we've postponed our election from May 2 to November 3, and so some of the projects we were holding off on, you know, it's, it's basically the, the main one is that Water Plant One and this large clarifier reconstruction, where it's really not advisable to hold, to delay proceeding on that project for six months due to the election, and so I guess two items. Okay, can you hear me from here, should I come up?
I'm just curious if the public can hear you.
Oh, yeah, on the mic.
Okay, good.
That's much better, Charles.
Okay, is this good? Okay, so, 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 yeah, so just to reiterate, in case you couldn't hear, the first item is bond election delay and impact on the schedule of capital projects. As you're aware, we've had the, the election postponed from May 2 to November 3, and so one of the critical projects that really shouldn't be deferred for that timeline is rebuilding that large clarifier at Water Plant One. And so the items to consider on that one for schedule would be looking at a possible reimbursement resolution to at least have something in place to, in the event that we do get the bond election passed. We have that opportunity to recover those funds from our general fund balance, you know, from this authorization we may get in the future bond election. And then the other aspect of it is just getting moving on it, as at least for an engineering design standpoint over the summer, and have it ready to be out for bid by the end of the year. And so that, that's really the, the main, the main project I see that we shouldn't really, you know, keep on, on hold as, as the election's being deferred. So, I guess part of this is just to try to get some feedback from the board, or, you know, some other input on what direction we should take for, for that project. If you have any comments on that one?
Yes, Charles?
On which, on which particular, on your first bullet point?
Oh, just the first bullet point, oh, yeah, I guess it's the second one, the Water Plant One Large Clarifier. I mean, we are talking about, there is an estimate here, that this project cost is $1,343,000, with the engineering, design, construction management being $176,000 of that, of that cost. And so at this point, you know, we're looking at, you know, requesting to proceed with engineering only ahead of the, of the bond election, and, and I guess in that case, it's a soft cost, so it doesn't necessarily require a reimbursement agreement. I guess that's the guidance we've been getting from Bond Council, but from a strategic standpoint, we still want to, may want to have a reimbursement agreement in place, just to, but only authorize the engineering fee at this time to start design, and then when construction comes due in December, January, you know, as we call that election in August, then we can look at increasing the authorization amount for reimbursement request after we've had the referendum in August for the November election. So, those are, those are ideas to consider on how to proceed with this one project task.
And then... I think the engineering has to proceed, regardless, it's going to have to be done one way or the other.
Right.
How and when it's paid for is a separate question, but I would go ahead with the engineering anyway.
Thank you. We'll bring some more information at the next board meeting, so we can at least move forward on that one, and we're looking at a reimbursement anyhow towards the end, closer to the bond election. The, the, that's one thing that we'd like to start on, and... That's one thing that we'd like to start on and, and get it going with the engineering, because it takes like three, three months maybe.
Yeah, I mean.
Months on that part only, just to get everything going and uh, then we'll be closer to the, the bond election by, by that time.
Yeah, two, two aspects to consider is the procurement. If, if we wanna, if we wanna have the, the engineering eligible for.
You speak up, Charles.
Yeah, no, one aspect to consider is procurement as far as if we wanna have these engineering services reimbursable. And we wanna, you know, do the disadvantaged uh, business enterprises, you know, show our good faith effort to procure engineering services. And so, but then we have the time of getting that proposal on the street and awarded. That would, you know, delay uh, getting into a, you know, starting a contract with an engineering. Unless, or if we choose to use our local funds for that engineering contract, then we just, you know, can request a task authorization from Freezing Nichols and proceed. With it being uh, out of our fund balance. So that, that's another, you know, option to, to consider if you wanna have it one way versus the other.
Okay, we'll bring back uh, the next board meeting.
I've got a couple, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Uh, the, I, I guess you addressed one of them being how, or if we get paid. I guess the other one uh, would be that, uh, and having read some of this material. Uh, some of my concern is in timelines. There are no guarantee of these timelines or cost for that matter. Um, what do we do about that? Correct.
Can't hear anyone speak, please use the mic.
I, my, can you hear me?
Mutes themselves.
Can you hear me, Scott?
I can hear you, Alex. I can't hear, uh, I think it was Charles or someone was.
Okay, well, my comment was that some of my concerns are with timelines. There, we're being told that there are no guarantees in the timelines and or cost on this project if we move forward. I understand that it needs to get done, but I, I would like, I don't wanna write a blank check here. Um, we need to make sure that there are some uh, limits as to what's gonna go on, you know, and how long it's gonna take. Uh, if the purpose of doing this is to get it up and ready for the project, then it should have a timeline. And if it exceeds that timeline, I would like it in writing that somebody is gonna make up the difference.
Those are excellent points, Alex.
Yeah.
Having writing, that's all.
Yeah, it's, it'll be part of when we do the task authorization uh, for engineering contract. I mean, tho- those schedules will be included in, you know, in, into that.
Yeah, uh, well, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the schedules. I mean, I understand that there can be some delays. My concern is that who's gonna pay for that delay? That's what I need addressed. Thank you. I, I do have, I, I just have one more, one more question, I guess, for, for uh, Mr. Nojosa. Are you available?
Noe, Nojosa? I, I am.
Hey, Noe, uh, do you see any issue with pulling this particular uh, element out of the project? And, and moving forward with this at this time?
Uh, I think either option is fine. A hundred and sixty seven thousand, I think, was the name, number that was given to me. Uh, I think you wanna be nimble if you have a relationship with Freezing Nichols and that's someone you wanna work with. Throughout the, then all the projects, that's one way of doing it by you controlling the project with your engineer. Another is uh, to, to preserve the option of adopting a reimbursement resolution. That will be prepared by Noel Bades, pond council uh, at your next meeting so that you can at least uh, have that option. There for you where you can reimburse yourself for those hundred and sixty or hundred and seventy thousand dollars from bond proceeds. In case you need cash. For some event that we can see now happening in August or September. So either option is fine, but I would caution you that I rather you have the option to reimburse yourself. So that um, so that you can, you know, execute it, execute that option if you need money. Down the road and the, and the money coming from the water onboard, I suspect is gonna be pretty cheap done in December. So my recommendation this time is that, is that you go ahead and, and, and procure for the engineering services. And at the next meeting, adopt a reimbursement resolution. So that when you borrow the money from the water onboard sometime in December or January of next year. That you can look back and say, oh, by the way, I can reimburse myself for one seventy for engineering services. And, and my cash position is such that I need it. If your cash position is such that you don't need it, then don't do it. But it's just an option, it's just a tool.
And then one of the concerns that we had mentioned was uh, coming from Noe that uh. August, September hurricane season is, is around and uh. Be concerned about it, you know, just, just that. We uh, if we need those funds back.
And I mean, that, that's as everyone is, we need to, you know, be cautious about our spending and saving. And, you know, it'd be interesting what our revenues will be coming in in the next six, eight weeks also. That's.
Yes, sir.
And that also affects your bond rating going forward too.
I can't wait for twenty twenty to be over.
That's two of us.
Okay.
That, yeah, yes, I suppose to address.
Keep the loudness, we'll go down after a while.
All right, yeah, yeah, so the last items, I did have the bullet point on here for Long Island Village water sewer improvements. I was just wondering if uh, we're gonna have any uh, opinion on that with the change in um, in the bond election? If we still want to defer that until after an election or if we wanna look at that this summer, you know, from a, from.
As far as I'm concerned, we've always told them that that would be deferred until after the bond election.
Okay, so we stick to it.
I mean, speaking for myself.
You're correct, I support that.
I do support that.
I agree.
Right, yeah, that was the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, so that concludes the report, those just the.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, thank you, Charles, appreciate the updates. Let's move along to item ten, director of finance report.
Okay. The uh. The first thing I wanted to discuss was something that uh. I was asked to, to discuss the fund balance. So uh, our currently, our, our fund balance in the general fund is uh, seven point seven uh, million dollars. Now, that is approximately about a, a year's worth of uh, operating. Uh, revenues, uh, not taking into account. Uh, funds that are, that are used uh, to pay our uh, our revenue uh, bonds.
So the seven seven is all that unrestricted or part of that restricted?
Part of it is, is restricted.
How much?
Non-spendable, um. So two point two million is uh, is committed for a particular purpose. Uh, so uh, unassigned is six point six million. Uh, yes, so unas- unassigned at the end of the fiscal year was six point six million.
At the end of? Last September?
As of September thirtieth.
Okay.
That's right.
But you just said two point two was.
Uh, sorry, I, I was mistaken.
Okay. Two point two is committed restricted for bond payments, current bond payments.
Yes, but in the general fund, uh, what's unassigned uh, is six point six million.
If you have seven point seven minus two point two would be five and a half.
Yes, you can, uh, the two point two is not correct.
Okay.
Sounds like it's more one point one, correct?
That's right.
One point one restricted leaves us six point six and, and just to clarify for me, seven point seven, you said roughly. Is a year's worth of um, operating expenses, but this does not account for. Expenditures that we incur, you mentioned revenue bond, is, is, but there's other ones, so is that the one point one that you're trying to represent?
Yes, so, so uh, our projected expenditures um. This year was, was uh, about ten million dollars. And so the, the uh, the difference between the seven and the, and the, and the ten. Is the amounts that are going for uh, capital projects and for uh, the revenue bonds.
So our operating annual budget right now is ten million dollars, is that correct?
Our total bu- is ten million dollars.
But you're saying that roughly eight million could cover us for a year to provide water to our customers, would that also be correct?
Yes, eight million dollars would, would cover our um, our operations only. But would not be enough to cover our revenue bonds.
And I need one point one to cover our revenue bonds, is that correct?
Uh, revenue bonds this year is one point three, four, five.
So then nine hundred, three, four, five, so nine million, nine point three, four, five would be essentially where we need to be for the year, correct?
Yes.
Which brings our monthly. Overhead roughly seven seventy eight, seven fifty. I mean, that's just basically taking that nine point three, four million, dividing it by twelve, we come up with roughly, let's call it seven hundred and eighty thousand. Conservative estimate, okay. And that was really the number that I think that we were looking, just to see in the event, you know, worst case scenario. We gotta pay, provide water for a district for a month or two. I just wanna know what would that number look like? How would that negatively impact, you know, our general fund? And you've given me that information, so.
Yeah, amount of months' worth of, of revenue is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's about approximately one month's worth of revenue that uh, that we charge right now.
That's revenue, I'm looking for just makes, you know, like, we're making a little bit, you know, we, we got a little. Yeah. Our expenses still look like they're close to that number, I mean, I, I'm calculating they're right at seven eighty, so.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next bullet point. Monthly revenue, though, that was uh, what I said, about eight hundred thousand dollars is uh, is approximately our revenue. For April and for May, that was uh, approximately what we, uh, what we expected to receive. Uh, and June would be about a million dollars, uh, is what we would be expected to receive. Now, regarding this covid nineteen, we're definitely not going to uh, get there. Um, I just uh, got the numbers for our latest um. Uh, billing for uh, South Padre Island. Um, if, this is for the period that ended September thirtieth, uh, or I'm sorry, March thirtieth. And uh, we actually are not seeing any effects yet, we're still up. Um, on the, on the billing uh, fourteen percent. You can attribute that to our uh, rate increase that uh, the, over last year. Uh, so South Padre Island uh, through uh, March thirtieth. Uh, was up fourteen percent. I expect that to go down uh, significantly uh, next month. So we still have not yet seen the uh, effects of the, of the lower uh, consumption. Due to the lack of commercial activity on South Padre Island and, and throughout the area.
Eddie, do you have actual numbers for um, just March? And how much less actual water was used this March compared to last March? I'm sure it's probably in here, but be quick if you just tell me.
Um, the consumption numbers, the, the consumption is still, was, was still up.
Do you have just March?
So this March uh, versus last March, consumption was up a seven million doll- uh, seven million gallons.
Why do you think our consumption was up this year versus last year in March? That seems crazy.
If I may interject. It, it might be our smart meter system as well is more accurately accounting for cons- you know, consumed water. And there also could be. There are all, so it could be a delay in the impact. Now, I know we're trying to compare March to March, but.
Yes.
You know, really, March bills are representative of the previous month, I would think. I don't know if that's correct. I know bill- billing, when we're talking finances, there's gonna be a delay. I don't know actual consumption, if there's also a delay in that data.
Uh, yeah, consumption uh, has been up uh, all, all year long. Um, so people have been using water uh, more this year. Um, well, it, that can be attributed to, to weather, it can be uh, attributed to. Um, you know, the, the way the economy was uh, was looking good. Uh, throughout the, the, the year this year, a lot more tourism. Uh, on, on South Padre Island. Now, that is, is, is going to change, we know because of uh, the covid nineteen. Um, but so far, consumption this year has been uh, uh, above last year's numbers.
And if I may interject again, um, the first two weeks of March, you know, we weren't in the state that we are in now with the shelter and. You know, in place that wasn't enacted until two weeks ago today. Um, so again, I think we'll see more, you know, we'll see numbers that are more representative of our current condition in, in April than we will potentially in, in March. And then furthermore, um, there's obvious um, more attention being paid to, you know, washing your hands and I'm sure. I mean, I'm taking more showers in my house. I mean, we're just paying closer attention to, to being clean. So, you know, the fear, you know, oftentimes will, you know, dictate behavior, which is gonna cause them to use more water. I mean, to wash their hands more and so forth, so on. Commercial activity will definitely, we'll, we'll see that and I think we'll see that more in April, unfortunately.
Yes, I was also asked to uh, see if I could break down the uh, numbers by um, commercial versus residential activity. There wasn't a, a, a large, um, um, there, actually, there wasn't any difference between commercial activity. And, and residential activity, but there were a few categories that did uh, see reductions. Uh, as compared to last year for uh, for March. Uh, the categories that were reduced were um, uh, mobile homes. Um, hotel motels and restaurants. Those were the categories that were affected.
Especially restaurants are, are down and uh, making a lot less uh, revenue. So we'll have a true uh, uh, results at the end of, or the beginning of May. When we get all the numbers for April and uh, we will probably see a, a, a drop.
We will, and if I may interject one more time, the reasons, you know, I think these discussions are important is as we proceed through this unique time. Two things are gonna need to be discussed, next bullet point's one of them, but um, we need to look at our uh. Annual budget as one that needs to be a little more flexible. We might need to look at, you know, potentially. Cutting some expenditures that we were, you know, agreeing to, to, to spend at the beginning of the year. You know, because now revenue is being cut, you know, and so therefore, you know, we, we, we're not gonna meet that number that we projected in January, December of last year. You know, at, at the end of this fiscal year, so we need to start being proactive about that and looking at that. And I would encourage our finance department to look at that and capital improvements, you know, that we were considering that maybe could be pushed back. We need to look at that and start presenting, you know, those kinds of ac- ideas, I guess.
Yes. You are correct on that part, as uh, as less uh, water consumption is uh, is uh, treated. Less chemicals, we're gonna be uh, uh, buying and purchasing, so we'll see a reduction in our costs. Uh, our expenditures on that part, chemicals and uh, possib- possibly uh, electricity also. But uh, we, we do keep an eye on our expenditures and revenue the last six months of the year mostly to be. On the safe side, but we'll keep monitoring that as uh, much as we can and trying to bring to the board updates on them. If we see anything drastically that changes uh, less or. Or, or less or more, either way, uh, we'll bring it up to the board so y'all can be aware and uh.
And last, I'm sorry. He's not in the microphone right now. So if I could just, if if he wants to say something to my friend, that's great. But I want to say, I would rather speak in terms of money than in terms of water, if that makes sense. So, and and as we continue to have these meetings and have these financial reports, I would encourage us to say, this is where we were in the month of April last year. We we had eight hundred thousand revenue last year, whatever, be less than that because we didn't have smart meters. Um, and 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 this year, we had six hundred and forty thousand. So that's a hundred and sixty loss in this hypothetical example that we would need to start to consider to account for as we move forward. So as we get financial updates moving forward, I would encourage us to consider the comparison of where we were, or dare I say, where we projected to be and where we actually are, so that we can start making some decisions.
Yeah, Astral, if I could add some examples, let's say a water plant at the high service pumps we're looking at. So, you know, the Titan Marines, we're definitely in that project. That's about what, two hundred thousand or so? And and so uh, and so that that's one. So we don't have those. Is our lift station we have with that series twenty nineteen revenue? I mean, since that's already a revenue note with a fixed repayment schedule. I mean, there, we can proceed on on that job without, you know, having any impact on our annual.
Yes.
Little side note, Charles' microphone might be the worst one in the room. There's a lot of, there's a lot of interference. Um, I don't know if he want, you know, I don't know if sharing one is the smart idea, but um, just just to know.
Does this improve anything?
That's a lot better, but just pay attention not to speak directly into it. I hate for you guys to be responsible with microphone sharing, but um, I liked where your head is at from what I gather there. You you're already looking at some big ticket items that we could, you know, get away with, you know, kicking down the road a little bit. Because the one thing I don't want to do, just as my position in my opinion, is I don't want our employees to suffer financially. And I don't want our consumers to suffer, you know, so as long as we can help them. You know, I want to be able to provide water and provide employment for our our district for as long as we possibly can. And as we start to see the effects of our lack of revenue stream, we need to consider how we can protect those two entities. And and I'll quit hijacking the meeting now. I'll mute myself.
The uh, the next bullet point uh, I was gonna discuss would be the um, I was asked to at the last meeting to uh, uh, bring a report about uh, possibly setting up something for uh, a program for deferred assistance, um, uh, assistance to our customers. Uh, at this point, we we can uh, discuss, but I thought uh, a um, a program that the Public Utility Commission has uh, begun uh, would be a a good place to to start our discussion. Now, they are are trying to, they set up a program for both electric and water. Electric is is by far more expensive uh, than than water. But uh, i- in addition to stopping disconnections for for non-payment um, and uh, and penalties. Um, what they decided to do was to uh, create a a list of of people who um, are suffering unemployment. And they targeted uh, their their assistance to residential customers only. And they uh, the people that are that have suffered uh, unemployment are being added to this list. And they have thirty days to um, to turn in proof of uh, that they qualified for uh, economic assistance from the uh, Texas uh, Workforce Commission. And uh, they are um, going to help pay down their um, their those peoples partially uh, pay pay their bills. And the way that they're financing this program is through a new uh, surcharge that they're charging uh, everybody else. So all the people that can pay are gonna be uh, are gonna be paying a new uh, surcharge. And uh, then they're gonna use the the money from that program uh, to help uh, the uh, what they call their low income uh, list people.
We uh, did uh, quite the research. We had both our uh, bond counsel and and our our legal counsel here, uh, Brian. And then also our finance advisor, we uh, we all did some research and and uh, on some of our bond covenants, there's uh, information in there that uh, that kinda mentions that we cannot give water away in one way. But then uh, towards the end, it mentions another clause. Uh, Mr. Noel Valdez, or do you have the information available?
I do, Carlos. I hope you all can, I hope you all can hear me. Uh, and again, this is Noel Valdez with McCall, Parker, St. Horton Service Bond Counsel to the District. Uh, yes, we did take a look at the direction of staff. We took a look at your bond covenants. And I'll in I'll summarize by saying that there's a covenant in your revenue order that is standard in the industry that provides uh, a promise to your bondholders that you will not provide free service. And like I said, that's industry standard uh, in revenue bond ordinances. So that means that revenues have to be billed, they have to come in, and they then go through your flow of funds. And so your first bucket on your flow and flow of funds is payment of maintenance and operation expenses. Second is the payment of your upcoming debt service payments. Third is replenishment of your reserve funds to the extent that they need replenishment. And lastly, the bucket that they go to is to the payment um, is is to the payment of the amounts required for any lawful purpose. This is the the exact language. So although the district cannot give free service, perhaps with that last bucket for any lawful purpose, it can uh, get creative with regard to to assistance payments. But that's what the uh, bond covenants require. I will also say that, as you know, the bond covenants require that rates and charges be uh, charged on a monthly basis to pay MNO expenses and coverage on your outstanding parity bonds. And I can defer defer to Brian, but I mean, that's what your bond covenants require. So then any other type of program would have to be in compliance, or any type of financial assistance program would have to be in compliance with those bond covenants.
Okay, uh, thank you. And uh, Brian, any information that you want to add to that one?
I mean, I I think he has the right information. I don't, I don't have any question as to knowledge of the bond covenants and what they require. So we talked about it, we talked about with the district. I I can tell you that with a lot of other, you know, well, I represent some water supply corporations and they don't, they're not quite as restricted. They're a little bit more independent sort of uh, than uh, from some restrictions. They're quasi-governmental entities. But what they're doing um, is they're following the P the PUC order and uh, they're not disconnecting anyone. But when it, whenever this, you know, and we don't know when it's gonna end or when there's gonna be an order lifting that. But I think the plan is is then to have those people enter into payment plans with no interest and no penalties for things that, for something that's reasonable to them. Um, and so that's one thing that's going on out there. But as far as what you guys want to do with your funds and what the bonds allow. And, you know, whether we're we can get creative with that clause or not, you know, I, we probably need to see what's going on everywhere else around in the country and see people are doing that too. And and, you know, um, I'm sure bond counsel will be well aware of what's going on with, you know, with with in particular to that.
Absolutely.
We're not gonna suspend anybody's service. It seems like to me we could be premature in making any decisions. I would suggest we just wait, see what the delinquencies go up to, then, you know, if it needs to be addressed, it needs to be addressed. But the bottom line is, no one's gonna have their water cut out.
Right. Yes, sir, Mr. Avalos.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a comment, I guess. Um, what about if we use the deposits that people have in their accounts? Is it possible to do that? To use tho- those monies to help them out?
The the deposits are there um, i- if if people uh, you know, get get behind on on their payments. Uh, you know, the deposits can help uh, uh, pay some of that, some of that cost. But but yeah, that's that's uh, already a normal part of our collection process when somebody is is has a big bill and they're not a a un- unable uh, to pay, that's they uh,
I guess what I'm asking is, can we apply that going forward? You know, is there monies there from people that perhaps will now fall back that we can use their deposit to pay? So that that's, that's normally what we would do first, is what you're saying.
Um, yeah, if somebody's unable to to pay, the the deposit is is there. Uh, but we usually um, after six months of, uh, I think it's six months of um, of a good payment history, then we we refund that deposit. So there's a lot of accounts that don't have a deposit.
I guess, I guess, I I guess my question would be, because you alluded to charging others to finance others. What if we use that pool of money that is sitting there? Uh, and and discuss that with those customers that if we could use it for that purpose? What I, that's actually what we were talking about earlier, in a sense. By implementing a surcharge, which I really don't agree with, to be honest with you.
You can't use someone else's deposit to pay someone else's bill.
Correct. Yeah, tho- those accounts that uh, each customer has, it's their account, it's uh,
Obviously, we would not do it without their permission. But that that's my, that was what I was alluding to.
But those uh, uh, accounts are are, they belong to each of the customers.
Correct.
It is not, I think those are restricted.
Yeah, yeah, that that money doesn't belong to us, it belongs to those customers. So we can only give it back to them.
I know that I I provide, I uh, with the the legal information that we can use that fourth clause. I did come up with some information that uh, we can provide, but I definitely bring it at a later date because uh, I don't think it's the right time to discuss this one yet. But I uh, do have some information on that.
Well, we we would, it might not be the right time, but that shouldn't keep us from preparing for that day.
Right.
Okay.
And this one is like a, okay, it it is a reasonable uh, plan that uh, we discussed. I've discussed it with uh, my finance advisor. And he said it, it looks like pretty good. Okay. We'll bring it back in a minute.
Carlos.
I I have one question, Carlos. I heard you mention something about the the Workforce Commission uh, letters. I don't think you can't require someone to to provide that letter for for payment assistance. If if I remember earlier in the beginning of this discussion, you said something about uh, following the PUC and then having the uh, Workforce Commission letters for people that are either on assistance or or uh, on unemployment, you can't require people to have those letters.
Uh, I think Eddie mentioned that one.
According to the uh, the PUC's uh, program, it says that within thirty days of of being provisionally added to the list, you'll need to provide documentation of your qualification for unemployment benefits from the Texas Workforce Commission to the low income uh, list administrator, so that you can be officially added to the list.
Okay, I stand corrected. Any other questions or comments?
I got a comment. Carlos, I'm intrigued by the information that you've uh, accumulated to provide. Obviously, now is not uh, the appropriate time. I lean more towards Mr. Houston's comments. You know, we're not turning off water, we're not charging late fees. I think that's a huge milestone for this district uh, today. But I would be open to a workshop or another meeting to discuss what you've accumulated to discuss what we're talking about in regards to deferred assistance. Um, because there is very much a demographic that exists within our district that is gonna be suffering and they and they already are. And um, you know, and from what I gathered from our legal advice regarding this, you know, we can't be in the pro bono business because the corner that we're painted into by our bond responsibilities. So I want to honor those and not break that. But at the same time, I don't want certain demographics in our community, six months, nine months down the road when this thing's past us to have a six hundred, seven hundred, nine hundred dollar bill, you know, uh, along with all the other bills. So if there's anything we can do to be proactive in regards to assisting those people, I would be uh, all ears and and available at a time, you know, that works for everybody else to talk about how we can help. So, thank you everyone for bringing all the map today and all the information. Um, whatever the PUC is doing in regards to this topic, you know, I'm an advocate of 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 mirroring that. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Also want to uh, correct, I misspoke about the deposit. It's it's not six months of good payment history, it's eighteen months of good payment history.
Is that it? Okay, or where are you?
That's it. Um, we, I have also been monitoring uh, the the CARES Act uh, to see if there's anything in there um, that would uh, would benefit us. But uh, as of this time, I haven't found anything that would um, help us. Um, uh, I I did find where um, where businesses, if they if they get money in the form of a loan and they use that money to pay their utilities, uh, that money turns into a grant and they don't have to pay that back. Uh, so I think that's possibly why the PUC is not uh, doing any assistance for uh, businesses. They're only targeting theirs to residential customers.
You you're correct. Okay, does that conclude?
Yeah, that concludes my uh, Director of Finance report.
Thank you very much. Let's move along to item eleven. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports for February twenty twenty. Any comments, questions? Everyone had a chance to review them?
I don't have anything to add.
I'm moved to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Avalos for approval.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Houston. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, and opposed. Non-motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item twelve. Consider and discuss for possible approval, the purchase of two mag meters.
Yeah, good afternoon, Enrique Sanmanigo, purchasing agent. Uh, we have a couple of service orders that need mag meters. This purchase, it's a single source. Uh, so the staff recommendation, it's the for approval of the purchase of the meters uh, with Ferguson for twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Anyone have any questions? Do we need to do these right now? Or is it a nine one one or?
Um, Robert, do you know about the need for these?
Are these meters?
On the meters is that they are for customers, so we are going to get reimbursed on these meters.
Move to approve.
Second.
For approval by Mr. Avalos, second by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item thirteen. Consider and review expenditures from March sixteenth, twenty twenty through March thirty first, twenty twenty. Move, we acknowledge. Motion to acknowledge by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Second.
Uh, second acknowledgement by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Are unopposed, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, let's move along to item fourteen. Executive session permitted by the Open Meetings Act, V T C A, Government Code, Section five five one zero zero one, at sequence under section five five one zero seven one, consultation with attorney, discussion on FEMA related to Hurricane Dolly two thousand eight payment plan for recoupment of funds request.
Move to go into executive session.
A motion made by Mr. Starkey for executive session, second by Mr. Avalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are. Uh, anyone that's associated with this executive session item, if they could please excuse themselves. Uh, we'll take about a two-minute recess and proceed as directed.
You could have a five minutes.
Five minutes, please.
Five minutes, okay.
Yes.
Uh, need a motion to come out of executive session at uh, six fifty six P M.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Out of executive session. Uh, item fifteen, a consideration and action on executive site. Out of executive session. Uh, item fifteen, a consideration and action on executive site, executive sessions, if necessary, uh, we're just going to proceed as directed. And Daisy, for the record, I did not enter what time we went into executive session.
Six thirty-nine.
Okay, so for the record, so I guess that takes us item sixteen. We'll adjourn this meeting at, uh, six fifty-seven P M.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, adjournment by, uh, Mr. Starky acknowledged. And, uh, who is that?
Dr. Lallana.
Dr. Lallana, okay. We need to adjourn. I'd like to wish everyone the best. Stay safe and stay healthy. Uh, and until next time.